Parking easement agreement for SICA with Mr. Beckelman and then usual review of the regular meeting agenda. So, let's start with Long Branch Partner presentation, Mr. Malloy.
Good evening, Mr. Kermit. My name is Jack Plaeter. I'm the project attorney for Long Branch Partners. Really happy to be here. Yeah, I'd like to say that, and I have Nick, of course, over to my left, and we're gonna, Nick's gonna make a few comments. We also have Bob Northfield, who's from our architect, BCT, and also we have Eric Ballou from Insight Engineering. We're really excited about being here, and I have to tell you that our experience, I'd just like to compliment the staff. We've had a lot of meetings with Mr. Turner, Mr. Hayes, your public safety department in developing these plans, and we believe that, given their input, the plan's a lot better than it would've been if we just presented a plan without going, without the back and forth that occurred here. The property, as you know, is in the redevelopment area. It's approximately 11 acres. The blocks, I won't go through each of the lots, but the blocks are 274, 283, 284, 311. It's bounded by Broadway, Union Avenue, Second Avenue, Belmont Avenue, Memorial Parkway, and Liberty Street. When you look, and I took a ride down here, I mean, it looks fantastic since the demolition was done, and it really is the next logical step to complement, I guess, the luxury development that's been done on the oceanfront. This isn't on the oceanfront, but the way we've structured this, we really believe that this is gonna add to the area and be synergistic with the higher-priced development on the oceanfront, but yet it's walkable to the ocean, it's walkable to all those things, and it's gonna be more geared toward, I wouldn't call it, you know, necessarily low income or moderate income, but it's gonna be more affordable for both primary residents and second-home residents, and I think it's really gonna be a catalyst to redevelop the rest of Long Branch. So, we're very excited about it. Again, we're just happy to be here, and we really appreciate the opportunity that this governing body gave us to present our project. So, at this point, I'd just like to turn it over to Nick, who has a few preliminary comments, and then we'll turn it over to the professionals to take you through the project.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Jack. So, pleasure to be here again this evening. The last time I was here, I believe, was, if my record served me right, it was November 28th of last year, to present the concept plan for our approximately nine acres of property on Broadway. That culminated in a execution of a redevelopment agreement on December 11th by the mayor, as this governing body had approved it. And from that time forward, we've been hard at work, the entire DRA team, Bob Northfield at BCT and his team, and Eric Ballou at Insight, to develop what we're gonna present here this evening. And, in essence, what's transpired is, probably back in February or so, we presented the initial plans, the next level of design drawings, to Kevin and to Carl and to city staff for presentation. Comment came back to us with, "We need to realign Broadway to take care of some long-term issues that we've had there with the way the traffic movements are." So, we went back and forth with the city engineer. We had a couple of meetings here with the city engineer, city staff, to revise the plans based on input directly from the city, which resulted in the plan that we're going to present here this evening. And along the way, there was lots of comments about different bumpouts that we had in the design of the project as you rotated around the four corners of it, that were all incorporated into the plan. The winter was challenging. We had to resurvey all the property after the demolition, to do as-built drawings. So, as you can imagine, it was some, it's been a difficult winter, four nor'easters, lots of snow. Full survey crews were sent out here to resurvey all the properties post-demolition. All of that work was done, all of that information was needed in order to actually lock in the footprint for the entire development, and in particular, Phase One. So, by the time all that work was done, and we worked with the city staff to amend the plan based on the comments that brought us here tonight. So, we are pleased, very pleased, to be able to present tonight the overall development plan, and in particular, the Phase One elevations for the northeast corner of the development. And I agree with Jack, I think that in Long Branch, there's so many wonderful things happening along the ocean, that's great, but there's the rest of Long Branch. And we look at this as the transition between the ocean and the rest of Long Branch, very transitional. It really is kind of the missing link, the hole in the donut. We think it's pivotal to the life and the, and the way that Long Branch will be perceived in the future, and connect the rest of the city to what's happened on the ocean. So, with that, I'm going to present Bob Northfield. Bob came up from Baltimore today to present the architectural plans. We'll be relatively brief. I'm sure you have a full agenda, but we'll spend as much time as you would like on any questions or comments that you may have. But Bob will present the overall plan, and then Eric is here to present some of the design details on the engineering side of it. Bob Northfield.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you for your time tonight. Thanks. A little over 10 years ago, I was previously involved in the village of, down on the beach and stuff. I'm Pure Village, in the retail and residential development. So, it's great to be back in town to contribute to the fabric of the city, especially to Main Street, which we think is really great. So, tonight, we'll be presenting Phase One of the Broadway Place, Main Street Arts and Entertainment District. Phase One is oriented by Second Avenue on the east, Union to the north, Liberty on the west, and the reconfigured Broadway to the south here as well. It's about 200,000 square feet, 166 residential units, about 20,000 square feet of retail that's anchored by a market, and then a couple of smaller retail and restaurant food and beverage establishments. We've got a temporary, for Phase One, we've got a temporary surface parking lot of about 233 spaces. So, we're parking the majority of all of our cars in this temporary surface parking lot, and the balance on the southern lot as well. The project is anchored by the market component. It's about 20,000 square feet. We have set the market component off the street a little bit, because we designed the whole master plan to give a little bit of a plaza amenity to break Broadway, but majority of the project is right on Broadway Avenue to reinforce the Main Street design that we see consistent going down further to the west and things. We're very concerned about how Broadway looked and how we treated Broadway, the main facade. We didn't want to have everything too close to Broadway. We wanted to look at successful other mixed-use projects, have a variety of setbacks, and then work with the vocabulary that I'll show you shortly, and the elevations where the variety of balcony elements, we have setbacks, we have different materials, and we tried to break down the scale of the project into several buildings. It's about 700 feet from one face of the block to the other, so we're looking at doing maybe two cylinder amassing objects in this first phase, and then later on down the road, we can actually get into different types of architecture, just like there's different buildings here. There's a unified bulk, we've got the same thing in Phase One. So, if we zoom in on the actual Phase One portion, 20,000 square foot market off at a plaza right at the front on Broadway, servicing is to the north off Union Avenue. 166 residential units that are on five levels of dirt over here, and then we've got four levels of residential over top of a retail podium is what we call it. So, we've actually got retail on Broadway, four levels of residential, and then around on Second Avenue and Union, the residential comes straight down to the street. So, it's a variety of different types of experiences and things. We have a nice articulate curb facade as you're coming into Broadway, which creates a very proper gateway element. And then we're also doing a variety of setbacks and steps to break down the scale of the project. We have not finalized the leasing, but we're preliminary talking about doing some food and beverage in the quarter, and maybe here as well with some outdoor seating, and then a variety of retail. The retail will be serviced by a back-of-house corridor with some machine rooms and what have you, and then a Phase One trash area over here on the western facade of the market area. The residential project would be entered off Second Avenue through a lobby here, and is kind of a courtyard scheme. This courtyard is about 55 feet by about 120 feet, and it offers kind of a very nice amenity area where people can do things, get a little reprieve from the street. All the other units face the outside of it, come straight down to the ground. We'll do a large generous lobby with amenities inside of it, and then we'll work our way into the more private areas. The residential has a dedicated loading dock that's undercover off Union Avenue, approximately two loading spaces for it as well. Broadway is a complete street. We've got landscaping going down the middle. We've also got a feature medium that we're treating as well, and working to do things that optimize pedestrian movements, and then in future phases will allow for cross-shopping across Broadway. So, we pay a lot of attention to the width of the sidewalks until later phases, so that people can cross-shop across all the streets. If they go up one level, this is the volume space. The first level of retail is very tall. We want very large storefronts, so we give a great impression for a retailer, so they can showcase their goods and wares and things. So, the grocery store is approximately 18 feet tall. This is a little bit taller, because we've got some slope on it. So, we're able to squeeze one level of residential above here. So, this is really the second level of residential, the volume space of the tall retail that faces the plaza and Broadway. The third level of residential is the first level. We have continuous residential all the way around. We have residential facing Broadway to the south, all the way around, and then interior courtyard units as well as exterior courtyard units to the back as well. Purple is residential. You'll see some other things that are color-coded as well. Then we go to the upper plan level of it, which is, the top floor is one story taller in the front of Broadway, and then it steps down one level to the back off Union. We have a variety of studios, ones and twos. We're anticipating a mix of about 50% one bedrooms, 25% twos, and 25% studios. We'll probably tweak those numbers as we go along and things. The very top level, we're looking to do a small amenity terrace roof terrace that will have wonderful views of the beach and what have you, along with some lounge and amenity space. So, this is a little bit taller with the Broadway Avenue facade, and we've got typical unit sizes. Studios are about 510, ones are 720, two bedrooms are about 1,008. We'll be a variety of different types of units and stuff by the time it's all said and done. So, what we're trying to do is work with a kit of parts. We looked at other successful projects that we talked with the city on, and one of those projects was the project down in Bernal Beach. It was called Market Commons at Memorial Beach. And everyone pointed to that, and it felt really good, had a lot of stuff vocabulary, it was rather simple materials. So, we looked at that, and we tried to embellish that and build upon it. So, this is the avenue, Broadway Avenue elevation, so we see the quarter feature restaurant space with very high floor-to-floor and really nice glass, light, bright storefronts. So, we can put our best foot forward with our food and beverage, with some in-line retail. So, we're looking at using a combination of brick at the corner, glass and stone, very in the middle, and then this is the market street elevation, which is pushed back a little bit. Above it, you'll see the four levels of residential, the front on Broadway, and then you'll see some other elements that go over to the temporary parking, which is over to the west. We're putting landscaping on both the streets as well, so we have street trees on a regular basis, and we're looking to do that so we can trim them up and see the great retailers and storefronts that we're putting on. If you look at the east elevation, which is the Second Avenue elevation, this is Broadway, the reconfigured strip. You can see we're stepping. This plane here is closer to the street, this back plane is set back about another 15 feet, so we get a variety of ins and outs that are typically in moderate elevation. It doesn't look like one large building. This is actually pushed back, this comes forward, and the retail bases actually popped out as well and things. The side elevation, the residential, comes all the way down to the ground, which this is more of a residential nature of street, so we're talking about using a concrete base, precast with brick, with fiber cement siding above. This corner elevation, which is a little bit higher than the rest of it, has a wood trellis for the roof deck area. We're talking about using fiber cement, brick, stone, metal as access. As we go around the building, as we go around the building, this is the north elevation of Union Avenue. So, this is the eastern portion of the facade, where we tend to turn the brick around the corner, and then we go to a precast base to it. We get a fiber cement siding along with fiber cement panels, which are a little bit more modular, to break up the scale of it. This is the loading dock to the residential area, which is approximately two bays. This is the back of the market area, and this is the temporary parking that you see over here to the other side. We raised a parapet on top of the grocery store to hide all the HVAC and mechanical units, and then we're treating the back of it with a variety of materials, so you get a good scale that steps down to the residential that goes around there as well. So, then if we talk about heading eastbound on Broadway, this is the temporary facade you see in Phase One, which is the side of the market, which we're doing some temporary landscaping up against. This is that market plaza that you see off Broadway right here, and you see the variety of steps and the variety of materials, more with the brick, the fiber cement, some stucco and decorative reveals, and later phases, a majority of this is covered by a parking deck that would bring it into the project, but not part of Phase One. And then we tried to kind of evoke a warm contemporary palette of materials, subject to have a limited variety in the whole thing. So, a lot of the project has a base of brick, of masonry units, a combination of precasts and some stone and limited areas. Then as we move up, we have a lot of fiber cement siding and various modulations of horizontal and larger panelized, as well as some accent stuccos, great storefronts of the street for our retailers who wanna have really strong retail as an amenity of the project. And then some of the more residential details of the roof terrace with wood trellises, and then maybe three or four metal accent colors in the storefront and other trim pieces to it as well.
I think it was your last slide.
Okay. So, if you wanna get back to the site plan. So, it's not--
Do you want your site plan, the architectural site plan?
Yes. If you could go back. I'm sorry. So, overall, it's a well-planned, typical layout of the whole thing. It's got a very nice scale to it, it fits in well with the Main Street of it, and we wanna thank the city for all their feedback and all the citizens that are giving feedback. And it's been a very good partnership as well, so if there's any questions, just hold on, we'll have it explained.
Are you the guy that asks, "What are the changes, the physical looking, physical changes in the street?"
The physical, I'd like to have Eric Ballou, our civil engineer, address it, if you don't mind, he's a little bit more knowledgeable about that and stuff. But if there's any other questions on the architecture or the look of the field, let me know. But this is a good progress we wanna share. We're excited about sharing what we're doing for Main Street.
Okay.
That question has to do with you. But, so landscaping that's shown, has been happening in Phase One on Pogo's side of the building?
Eric will address it. This is a temporary parking lot here, so some of this landscaping may not happen in Phase One, but my understanding, and Eric can confirm it, is a lot of the landscaping along Broadway--
All landscaping along Broadway and around the building will be done. We're not 100% sure on how much we're gonna put in the temporary lot.
There's this notion of complete streets, and streets have some landscaping and lighting, sidewalk paving, whatever.
Yeah, just to embellish on that for one second, so that everybody understands that Phase One is actually the building that Bob just described, and also the reconstruction of Broadway. So, that's Phase One. All that landscaping along Broadway, those pop-up stores down the boulevard, and the building that Bob just described, that's Phase One. They'll be done simultaneously.
Is Eric gonna talk about the pop-ups on the street?
Yes, yeah, yep. Okay. Thanks, Bob.
An arrangement for affordable housing in this phase?
No, that comes in--
Phase two or three.
Third.
Three. I think it's three. Yep. But we will do it.
I know.
Were these plans just completed today?
No.
Is there a reason we didn't get them on Friday?
These plans are a work in progress. I mean, we've had meetings down here, including yesterday and a couple of days before that.
No, it was yours, because the resolution said that they would be attached, so I'm just curious why we didn't get them on Friday.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
We filed them on the 5th, I believe. We did file them on the 5th.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
We did send them to town on the 5th.
I wasn't aware the resolution said they were attached.
Yeah. We didn't send the resolutions in, I apologize.
I'm sorry?
Okay, so Eric Ballou from Insight is here to review with the council, mayor and council, the engineering aspect of the drawings, the more of the technical aspects, and depending on the level of detail that you'd like to get involved in. Eric will give an overview, and of course, any questions that you have, we'll be happy to answer.
Great. So, what we've been working on since we left here last time, we've been working on the roadway designs all around, and it's over 3,500 linear freedom roads. It was quite a lot of roadway that we had designed, we combined Union, Second Ave., Belmont, and Broadway, and even improvements of Liberty and Memorial Parkway. So, what we've been working on is trying to maximize the amount of on-street parking, at the same time, fix the alignment problem that exists on Broadway at this time. So, in regards to increasing parking, what we've done is added a combination of parallel parking, when possible, and also introduced some angled parking on Union and Second Ave., where we have the ability to do that, to try to maximize it, which gets us up to over 100 spaces on the actual streets. The other thing, too, that when we do these kinds of designs, it's very intricate, because we want to reconstruct the roadways to meet the development requirements, and at the same time, we need to respect the outside perimeter of the outside existing improvements. So, we've been going through a lot of iterations to actually coordinate that. One of the things that we had originally when we did the streetscapes, we actually do what we call bumpouts. So, where the cars are parked parallel, we actually bump the curb out for like eight feet, and then have cars sort of behind that. But what we're learning through, you know, working discussions with Public Works and Public Safety and through city officials, those do work somewhat better, maybe aesthetically to improve things, but with maintenance perspective and snow plowing and things of that nature, we learned a lot of things since we did them in 2005 in Pure Village. So, what we did, one of our major changes from our initial city meeting was actually removing of the bumpouts. Broadway, so Broadway right now has very much a sharp angle as it goes towards the east. So, it's sort of hard to represent here. What we've done is, is actually shifted the road like 30 feet to the, to the south to actually broaden that radius curve, to make it more free-flowing from a traffic perspective. So, we shifted the road almost about 30 feet to do that. And one of the reasons we were able to do that is the city owns a parcel of land at this intersection. So, this will be part of a right-of-way dedication from the city-owned property to right-of-way to allow us to make this smooth geometry. And the benefit about this, we're gonna go from buildings that are about 60 feet apart towards the west, it's gonna open up where these buildings are almost gonna be over 125 feet away from each other. So, it's creating a great openness to the green area going towards Ocean Boulevard. So, we've been working a lot on the different streetscape aspects and accommodating the building as well as, of course, the boulevard design. So, the other thing that happens with a city of this age of streets, is a lot of old infrastructure there. So, we're also going through and figuring out what infrastructure could remain, what needs to be relocated, especially with Broadway. You can imagine how many utilities are through there. So, we're working through some intricate designs to try to accommodate this nice boulevard design and yet still maintain the required utilities. So, that's the progress that we've been making from a site design perspective.
You were gonna talk about the center?
About the boulevard.
And the pop-ups.
Yeah, so maybe the architect can go through the actual design. So, what we have here is, we have the boulevard in the middle with that wide island, and there'll actually be some vegetation, some hardscape, as well as a couple of buildings in that area. That will be actually, the buildings themselves, I think, could be addressed by the architect to be better for that.
And again, I think the genesis for a lot of this is a very pedestrian-friendly environment. We love the fact that the city was asking us to open up Broadway and realign it. It actually gives us more area to open up as you approach our nine acres from the west, from the east rather, so that as you're approaching from the east behind CVS, opens it up greatly. We love the curved nature of Phase One, the building there, and the pedestrian-friendly nature of it. The walkway, you can see that wide walkway that leads up to the market area that'll just move the traffic from, you know, north to south, and just generally through that boulevard, where we see opportunities for temporary pop-up stores, a lot of different events, whether it be food trucks, other things that we can program in here throughout the year. Bob, maybe you can just give a little bit of sense of what the pop-up stores would be like, and what you, what we envision as a overall vision for those type of stores, and how we see with programming for that.
So, there's two larger buildings that kind of book in the linear park. We've got a raised table where it comes up a little bit and easy pedestrian connections. These will be very tenant-driven buildings. We see them as a lot of glass and a lot of transparency and things. We're looking at food and beverage opportunities with outdoor seating and things. So, we'll probably design them very much to be very glass and open, and then customize those when the leasing advances further, and we can take on some of the personality of tenants coming into the spaces. But for now, they'll be very much like glass little jewel box buildings. Until such time, do we have tenant commitments and things.
And one of the design elements that, Bob, if you can just note where that neck's down at the crosswalk there on Broadway, right down, right in the center there, back to where you were, where you see the throat of Broadway closing up a little bit. Yeah, where we cross Broadway from north to south, but in front of the market there?
Yes. So, this would be a table crosswalk potentially, so that pedestrians can go back and forth real easy. And this plaza, it's kind of wide open with landscaping around each edge. We have landscaping and seating in there, and we can do a variety of important events. We can have food trucks in there, we can have art scraps, we can do functions, what have you. It's meant to be kind of a very flexible space that's really kind of the center core of what we're working on.
What is table mean?
Tables.
Tables crossing.
Like a speed table, similar to the intersection of Broadway--
Yes.
--and the boulevard and Laird Street.
It's elevated.
It's elevated. Driver coming. Yeah, it's a very gentle taper, but it makes it very seamless transition from one side to right.
We love that comment by Carl and Kevin and the city staff to pull that in at Broadway, because that'll slow the traffic movements through there. Again, we see this as a very pedestrian, open, friendly environment, lot of pedestrian traffic, so we love the fact that as the traffic splits north and south on Broadway, that pulls it in, tightens it up, slows down the traffic for the pedestrians that are there.
I'm just busy talking with her. That one's food and beverage. What are you looking for for the back one?
This, the island.
The island.
Oh, these, I, we probably see this as food and beverage.
And that one.
This one could, we'd love to see food and beverage, but I think it's probably gonna be soft retail and things like that. Some sort of interesting crafts.
That's what you were referencing, pop-up?
Pop-up could be smaller ones, which could be more seasonal. It could be a variety of people that rented. It's almost like a kiosk in a mall.
Yes.
We get temporary tenants a little variety of things. Yeah. So, strong recognizing--
It's a friendly feature.
There's another thing called incubator retail, so we can give someone who's just starting out an opportunity to rent this, and as they develop in time and become business people, they become the storefronts and stuff. So, we wanna kind of build the retail community as well.
So, just one more comment on the engineering. So, behind these plans, there's lots more sheets that Eric and his firm have done. It's probably a set, I don't know, Eric, 20 drawings by now, that backs up all of the concept drawings that you're looking at, so there's lots of engineering behind this. As Eric noted, there's lots of utilities in Broadway that had to be dealt with. All of the lots were resurveyed, the as-builds, the relocation and realignment of Broadway. There's a fairly thick set of drawings already that's ready for us to lay out before the planning board. So, we're really at the forefront of the next step to move before the planning board here in Long Branch.
What is the game time for finding residence, not apartment residence, but the store residence?
So, the next step for us, as soon as we make application and appear before the planning board, we're gonna put together a leasing plan and really go out to the market with, you know, leasing brokers that specialize in retail. The key to this whole deal, from our perspective, Phase One is to find an operator for the food hall. That's the key. Whether it's a food hall, combination, grocery, organic foods, it's, that's really the key. That'll drive, we think, the rest of the retail. As you know, we have three liquor licenses in town, so food and beverage, that corner store that, right there, the radius store, we see as some type of a fantastic restaurant right there, utilizing maybe one of our three liquor licenses. So, between, we think it's gonna be a fairly easy lift. We are in some discussion with some food hall-type operators, some keynote-type restaurateurs that might be taking that over and then look for sub-tenants to have a variety of foods in there.
Mr. Malloy, were you aware that on March 1st, these plans were supposed to be submitted to the council and--
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, like I noted earlier, there's, you know, we went through four nor'easters this year. All of these properties had to be surveyed post-demolition in order to be able to really define comprehensively this architecture. We were down here in February, would've been prepared to submit, but with comments back from city staff for the realignment of Broadway that pushed us back a couple of weeks.
So, it's just coincidental that 10 days ago, I said that, I sent a letter to the business administrator and city attorney that we were, you were not in compliance. So, that's just coincidental that last week, these drawings appear--
Yeah, I have no knowledge of a letter that she sent to the city administrator, so, yeah, so I have no knowledge of that. Alls I can tell you is, we've worked feverishly since November and December when we were designated to develop these plans. So, weather issues, you know, held us back a little bit for the surveying. Comments from the city staff to re-engineer Broadway held us up for a couple of weeks, but we're here today and looking forward to moving the next steps.
Are we any more forward on the financial capability of your organization to build this project? Because, I mean, we've been asking-- Because, I mean, we've been asking for a lot of information for almost three years and I still haven't received any.
As near as I'm able to determine, we've been qualified by your financial consultant and we're beyond that at this point.
Is that true? Jim, I haven't heard that, is that accurate?
They've been qualified by Ralph Basil for phase one.
Ralph Basil never had said they were qualified for phase one.
We can respectfully disagree on that. But with any project, redevelopment project, banks will not commit to any lending until there is a final non-appellable project that has been approved with all approvals which are un-appellable. And that would mean that at that point in time, they can go and get their financing that is necessary. Right now, they have sixteen point seven million dollars of equity in the project and the developers agreement.
That's just the land, correct?
That's the value of the land. And what the redevelopment agreement calls for is that, if memory serves me correctly, that the balance will be raised by financing. And in the redevelopment agreement, there is a commitment from the developer to meet a shortfall between what is financed by the bank and the sixteen million dollars of equity.
Yeah.
But one last, one last thing, isn't it accurate that when we consider any large project for even temporary consideration for, or that we have, you know, that somebody has the financial wherewithal to do it?
Well, in this, in this fashion, we do it exactly the same way with with other projects. They all have financial contingencies and from the beginning, from nineteen ninety-six.
There's, there's two steps. There's the pre-qualification, which is the developer experience and the general financial capacity to carry a project. And then there's the later step that Jim referred to would be the actual financing of this specific project.
I was referring, Rob, to your earlier stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, because actually, if you look at some of the smaller development projects that were recently approved, as well as pure villages, there's always been a significant guarantee or guarantor who has the money to back that up. We haven't had that with this situation. We've talked about it for months, if not years. Tell me if I'm incorrect with that.
Well, we'll verify that, but I believe that that process went through the initial review by Vantage Point, yes.
Yeah, honestly, we went through an exhaustive review with, with that firm, with Ralph Basil. Lots of meetings, lots of discussions, lots of documents back and forth. We were qualified to reach this level and designated as the redeceiver and executed a redevelopment agreement with the city.
Any other?
I think we would refer at this time to Carl for his comments because it's his responsibility in this project to provide you with these, whether or not this project meets the conceptual, conceptually meets with the design guidelines and redevelopment plan.
Hi. This has been an extremely unique process with this developer. At times, it's been frustrating. At times, things haven't been put forward as quickly as we would like to have had them done. But at the end of the day, what has been very pleasantly surprising is this developer, unlike some other developers, has listened to the input from our planning board engineer, redevelopment engineer, city staff, myself, city council input and planning board member input. And what you have seen done here on the presentation by the architect and the engineer reflects all of that stuff that at times seemed like it was not being listened to, but it was. They have an extremely complete set of, this is the engineering plans that are planning board ready. They have the architectural plans, this is a small copy of them. They are ready for the planning board. And the only way I can describe this is it sounds maybe like a cliche, two cliches I'll give you, is doing a project like this is like building an iceberg. You don't see all of the work like in an iceberg, the mass that holds up the project that you see. And this firm has done an extremely large amount of work over the last year that some of which we didn't see, that at the end of the day we are seeing. And the key thing here is, it's another cliche, is form follows function. The key component to making this project work is the design of the site plan and the realignment of the road. Because that will determine the shape and size of the buildings as to whether the north side or south side is going to be twenty feet wide or a hundred feet wide. And as the developer talked about, the need to re-survey everything and verify the actual dimensions was most likely one of the major things that stalled this project from moving forward in the, in the timeframe that we all hoped it would have originally. So by saying that, what I'm saying is they had to verify and authenticate all of the dimensions for how Broadway would work with the realignment that we all wanted to, to get rid of that zig and the zag. Once they did that, they could lay out the buildings, which they have done. And the other thing I'll add to as to my planning review is they need three waivers. And the three waivers they need are, in my opinion, very givable by the planning board. And they are, number one is they have a portion of the building, if you want, Kevin, get up the larger component and I can show them easier on that.
You want to see the elevation of the buildings?
No, I want to see the, the site plan, the overall site plan. The whole, the whole area. I think it's the one back.
You want it right way, you think?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, the larger one. Shows the north side and the south side.
Good.
This, they don't have the buildings shown here, but maybe go back to the other one. I'll just, I'll just speak from that.
Which one do you want to go to?
The, the one you just saw.
Hey, Carl?
Yeah.
This one?
Oh, yeah, you did. Okay. Okay. This is an, I don't know if everybody can see this. But what they have is, one of the waivers they need is they actually have in a design guidelines is a requirement for a setback from buildings from Broadway to be greater than what they have. And what they've done is we have an existing building that's outside of their control, which is the Dr. Rivera Building that is right here. And because of that, in order to basically have a conforming project when they build this whole thing out, they want to start the alignment with the new building in basically in line with the existing building. So what you have is the fact that they need a waiver for having a building too close to the curb line of Broadway in this area. One of the things that we wanted to do also with the, with the, the design here is to ensure that we would not get a canyon effect of the building. So they would be either too close or too far back, so it would all be in one line. What the developer has done is vary on the first floor area, the, the areas where the building is close to the road and pulls back. And in phase one, as you can see, you have a curved area, you have an area that comes out and then pulls back into a pedestrian plaza. So what they have done is they've actually met the intent of the ordinance requirement, which is the design guideline. And they also need the waiver, as I said, in order to align with the existing building that is outside of their control. The second waiver they need, which is a unique kind of a waiver, is they're requesting to move the buildings further away from the property line on the north side, which is a good thing because you have a residential component, which is a housing authority, senior citizen building over here. So they're actually pulling the building back further than what the original design line, design guidelines called for. And the third waiver they're asking for is a parking waiver as to the count of parking spaces. Instead of having, which breaks down to depending on the type of units, the basically two per unit, they're looking to be able to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. Which is a waiver, the waiver granted both in the redevelopment zone along the oceanfront. And more importantly, where this project really relates to is not so much towards the oceanfront development, but more towards what is in our zoning ordinance for the transit village area that we right now have three approved projects. One is, I guess, going under construction right now. And we also have an additional redevelopment project that's also going under construction, which is the Sika Building, which is at one and a half parking spaces per unit. And it is, the type of residential unit that is in here is going to relate more closely to the type of users that you have at the, at the transit village area. So they're looking for those three waivers. Part of the building in one or two areas going to be too close to the setback requirement on Broadway. Part of the building going to be too far from the setback requirement on the Union Avenue side. And also the, the parking requirement, they're looking for the waiver for one and a half spaces versus two.
Carl, the parking that you mentioned, is that for the residents, for the people who use the market and just anybody that's going to shop?
Well, the, the whole concept down here was shared parking. The resident, the commercial component is the shared parking that they have on-street parking and some other parking. It's the residential parking that they're looking for the one and a half, not, not so much the commercial.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm going to make a comment. I don't think, we've just seen this an hour, an hour ago. We've not seen the plans and you want us to forward it on when we've not really been able to digest it. I, I just don't think that's fair for us. That's my comment. I can see all that and I understand all that, but I'd like to sit here and digest it before I have to pass something on.
Any other comments?
Just, we've been looking, excuse me, we've been looking at these designs for months.
Not this.
Yes, we have. We've been, well, you haven't been here, but we've been looking at these designs for months. I, the plaza is the same, the cut-out is the same, a little bit of the technical side, I have to say yes. But I've had this vision from the beginning. It's been, we've been discussing this. And I also, excuse me. Where are you? You. I, I would like to apologize. See, we have this thing going on in the city right now. And the way you were treated and the way you were snapped out, I'm embarrassed. And totally nothing from a friendly city, a person that I'm a councilman for. And that doesn't come from me and I'm going to speak for these two. It wasn't appropriate.
I appreciate that very much. I would just make a couple of comments myself. This is a, this is a project of monumental proportion by any barometer. It's a couple hundred million dollar project if it's a dollar. So we're making a major, major league investment in a very challenging area of your city, frankly. And we have projects much larger than this to Mr. Malone's point. I have a project that is a billion dollar project that's under construction. We just sold phase one of it to Toll Brothers for tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars, closing with several weeks ago. So we are more than qualified to handle this project. This is a relatively mediocre sized project for projects that my firm is currently involved in. So I thank you for that comment.
I'm Siriani.
Siriani. And I was getting to that and I, and I knew that. And, and I don't take any of these things personal. Everybody has different objectives, whatever they might be. We have a fabulous project, we're happy to be in Long Branch. We've worked very, very hard. This project has been around a long time on our plate and, and these plans have not changed. So to the earlier comment, this plan was presented on November the twenty-eighth, signed off by this council as a redevelopment agreement on December eleventh, based on the plan that was submitted. So it's been four or five months in earnest on the record and it's been a year before that. So these plans are not new, they're relatively old, they're consistent. And this is just the next level of design drawings. And we're anxious to move forward as interest rates continue to rise. So we'd like to get moving sooner rather than later. And I just have a final comment here. I looked at the developers agreement on page fourteen, section two point eight. It says, "The redevelopers using the property as equity to finance and satisfy its financial obligations for phase one and its equity component. The property value is estimated to be sixteen million dollars. The city agrees that the use of the property satisfies the equity component for phase one of the project, except that if the redeveloper needed additional equity as a result of its failure to obtain the total amount of financing needed for phase one, it shall, which is mandatory, contribute the additional necessary equity." And that was the language that was in the original agreement and was approved by the council back in December. So I just wanted to clear that up. So.
So, so let me just add, Mr. Malloy, and everyone else in the room here. First off, I don't think I was disrespectful and I don't have any apologies for what I've said because quite frankly, my interests are, are in the city, in the city of Long Branch and its residents.
And ours?
Excuse me, Michael.
And ours?
No. If you want to talk, go ahead. Whenever you're through, I'll, I'll finish.
Oh, you went to the dry cleaners because you got your big boy pants on today. Go ahead.
Talk about respect. Really? So, Mr. Malloy, we're just having a nice conversation, I appreciate that. Just want you to understand that we have asked for the financial capability of your company to build this project for the last three years. We have not received it. I think that that is a fair question. Mr. Siriani maybe thinks it's disrespectful. With respect to him, I disagree. But that's my point.
To answer the question, and again, everybody's entitled to ask any questions they want, we have.
And Jim, to your point, I mean, you have sent several emails where you point out that fact. So I don't know why you're saying something different now unless this has all changed.
I'm just quoting the redevelopers.
Okay. Yeah, we were found under, before the governing body signed this, we were found to be qualified financially. As far as the capability of doing phase one, you know, we have an equity investment and the proof is going to be after we get our approvals, if we can get our financing. I can tell you from representing this group that they have done large projects. We just closed a construction loan forum in Moorestown, New Jersey, what, about a month ago? It's a twenty-five million dollar construction loan, so you're not, but the proof's in the pudding. And we have, just like any redeveloper, the redeveloper doesn't have their financial plan in place. You can't even go to a bank today until we can show them that we have all our entitlements from Long Branch, DEP and all the other things. We were very confident that we're going to be able to meet that. And certainly, you know, we'll have to demonstrate that at the time. But we were found to be financially, you know, qualified to enter into this agreement. That's how come we were named the redeveloper. That's, that's our view. And we look forward to continuing to work with everybody on council to make this thing happen for the benefit of Long Branch and, you know, hopefully for our, our group here.
And that's absolutely fine. I just wanted to be clear, when Mr. Malloy sued the city of Long Branch for seventy-five million dollars, there was quite a different story there. So maybe that's all changed and that's fine. But that's the bottom line regardless of what anybody says here.
Well, the case has been dismissed and we had a difference of opinion and we've moved forward.
But let's not forget. He's trying to, he's trying to respond. You're interrupting him. Fine, you're interrupting the law.
He was just, you just did.
Please, continue.
Well, I, I think, look, there was, was a lawsuit. I mean, there were certain things that the city was angry about with us. We, we had, you know, there were taxes that were unpaid. There was a, there was blight that, you know, and the city wanted the buildings demolished. So today, the taxes are paid. We spent a ton of money, I don't know the exact amount, maybe Nick can speak, but demolishing those buildings. So, you know, originally, we were at cross purposes. I think the first meeting I had with the mayor, you know, he dictated to me, he was yelling, you know, telling me he was very unhappy with my client and that we needed to pay the taxes and do the demolition in order to get up the plate so we would even be considered. And then, you know, we conveyed that to Nick and he stepped up to the plate and found a way to do that. So, no, I, listen, I'll be the first to acknowledge it, hasn't been, you know, we started out on the wrong foot. You know, the mayor did what he had to protect the city. We've made a lot of strides and I think because we made those strides, we, we did garner a little bit of credibility with, with the governing body and we will continue to do that. I think the plans that we show and the professionals that we engage, I think you'll agree, it's a pretty outstanding project. And I think we continue to get a better relationship with the city and we look forward to a long and successful relationship.
Yeah, and I would mirror that. I think that we've worked hard, hand in glove with the city at every level. Since that time, there's a long and colorful history here. I don't think we have to rehash the last twenty-two years of what's gone on in, on lower Broadway. I think what's important from my perspective is we've made a major league investment. We demolished our own buildings in anticipation of moving forward with this development. We have been qualified by the city's professionals to, to build this project. I've been a member of a board of directors for a five billion dollar bank for a dozen years in New Jersey. And one of the many hats I wear is that I understand the bank financing and construction financing probably better than most, quite frankly. So we're well qualified to build the project. Our team has worked around the clock with the city's professionals to get to this point. We're anxious to move forward and a lot of the history, in my view, is irrelevant. We are where we are today. I think we have a fabulous relationship with city staff and hopefully with this council. And we're anxious to move forward and get to the next level and start construction.
Okay, Mr. Malloy, thank you very much. I just would have appreciated that with all that financing, you would have given it to us, you know, during.
We provided everything that your professionals asked for.
Okay.
And they qualified us, so we must have done something right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Carl, are you next on the?
We're kind of morgue together, so.
Okay, so next is the parking easement agreement. Mr. Beckman?
Kevin, you want to get the property on the board? Can you do that?
Sure.
I don't know how anything was ever accomplished.
I didn't know you wanted that. I would have had the drawing here, I'm trying to see if I have it in another document.
I would have had the drawing here and see if I have it in another document.
Well, they're attached to the document that's passed around. I just thought a visual would be helpful.
I can do a little alert on it.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what I meant, actually.
Oh. I think when we first did it, I had the site plan and the stuff for the council.
No, just for perspective of what we're talking about.
All right.
So this project concerns the rehabilitation of what we call the SECA building. And it's going to be, well, it's already approved and actually approved by the planning board also in November. So this project is ready to start moving forward.
Is it getting ready?
Been getting things ready.
Yep.
And a nice adaptive reuse of that building.
It is.
And if he's going to get going, a catalyst in that area, so.
So this is the, this is the building here. This is the lot. This is the chamber, chamber lot, city lot, SECA lot.
So what was in the redevelopment agreement when this project was approved to facilitate this rehabilitation project and meeting the parking needs was a joint arrangement with the city, the developer and the Chamber of Commerce to essentially have the developer revamp that entire parking area and create a consolidated parking lot that would be restripped and landscaped at the developer's expense and maintained at the developer's expense. So that was part of the agreement. We have to approve that since it's the city conveying an interest in property. It has to be approved by ordinance. So this is effectively us implementing that agreement. And so we have a specific parking easement agreement that details essentially that the developer's responsible for all the costs of doing this, that the developer's responsible perpetually to maintain the lot and that the developer's liable to indemnify the city for any use of its lot.
Rob, if you don't mind, can you just sort of explain to everybody for the sake of who's here and maybe for a viewer, like, exactly what's going on here?
Can you help me with that, Kevin?
Sure.
All right, I guess I'll go up there with you.
So this is the project being developed here, the SECA building, the old SECA building, the old Lincoln Can building, it depends on what you're. This lot is along here. This is the Chamber of Commerce building, their lot is back here and the city owns this lot here.
Maybe if you zoom in a little bit better, a little closer.
A little more zoom?
Please.
So essentially, these three lots are independent now and we propose to do a shared parking arrangement where the lots will be all redone, the chambers lot, the city lot and SECA's lot will all be redone by the developer and maintained by him. We're also going to be changing the traffic pattern where it'd be ingress only from Broadway, which has been an issue. It's very tight for anyone that's been to the UEC building, the office getting out. So the traffic will come, ingress from Broadway and egress out of the 30th Avenue. That's essentially what it is, joining the three properties here.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I thought it might be.
What is that?
I don't know what to explain.
Mr. Hayes?
Oh, sir.
That dark area, just again.
That's just the shadow. The parking goes up to the building here. So their parking lot, all that goes right up to this.
Just one of our friends in TV land, you know.
The shadow will go.
I don't know. It's the best I can do. Best I'm sure noticed.
So we have to put this in a resolution form? Is that what you're saying?
An ordinance.
An ordinance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just statutorily required to approve a transfer of an interest in property by ordinance.
It's on for tonight.
It's on for introduction. So, you know, if there were any issues with it, you could, there's time to pull it before the hearing. We've already put it in the agreement. We've agreed to the concept, but if there was an issue with the specific parking easement ordinance, it really does implement and just details what's pretty much in the redevelopment agreement. It does a paragraph saying we have to enter a parking easement agreement approved by ordinance and it covers those things, basically responsibility for the development of the lot, responsibility for maintenance of the lot and the landscaping and the indemnities to the city. So this is the document that implements that.
And the Chamber of Commerce is on board?
Yes, they've signed off and they only have to do a resolution, of course, to approve it, but they've reviewed the document, had comments to it and they've agreed to the concept as well. In fact, they signed off before the planning board because they gave permission for their property to be included in the planning board approval.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Beckelman. Finally, we have the review of the regular meeting agenda. Any questions, Kate?
No.
Michael?
No.
If not, I need a motion to close a public portion of the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any opposed?
All in favor.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive session for the following items. Contract negotiations with Long Branch partners, Mr. Aaron. And under litigation, we have a SARNO, Mr. Aaron, Hornman with Mr. Aaron, Sensei Tax Abatement, Rob Beckelman and Ed Warren with Mr. Aaron. We have a motion, please. Ball, please.
Mrs. Bastelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Billings.
Yes.
Mr. Siriani.
Yes.
Dr. Selly. Mr. Palone.